First, would you have a guest from Attant? Suppose I will just turn it over to you with your three guests and doctors.
Well, we don't have here is all this massive from Fenei, Fanae? Fanae, yeah, Fanae. Uh, and when he was done, he actually got to actually bought the old smoking loops to be bought some other buildings down there. And he's going on off to the next, and he's actually making those buildings up to the, he's working well without coal and they could be one of us out of public rich apartment. To get these things also work well with Jackson. But what he, what now is the old Calvin Theater, he's pushing the person to go Calvin Theater. And actually going in and do some work to actually make it look better and do something with it, that's how it is. And what I'm asking councilmen, we talked about a lot of price and that it's just been sitting there for all the car. And I'm asking councilmen that we actually circle us a willing, sell them to him for seven thousand dollars and he, and he's people take y'all closing costs, that's what I'm asking council.
Before that, um, there was a plan, and I think they Christian drew it. Where they were going to buy like a Calvin Theater out of it, and then they went to connect the line next door. And, um, and they showed it to my head, anyway, I, I would be willing to, I would be willing to highlight that line next door. But we wanted to know, have the theater, if you could go, people would like put these nice planks.
Yeah, I'll let them take it.
I did some drawings on that.
Uh huh.
Actually, councilman Lou, councilman Spence.
Uh huh.
Uh. Was it fifteen years ago, I think. Where we did some renderings and kind of showed what could be done. Uh. It was an opportunity to take, uh, building next door and create some office space for folks like Cass and, uh, uh, Knox at the time, and there were number of entities that, uh, kind of cultural event entities that were there. Create box office and, uh, use a portion of that building for set sun and construction and creating a full fly loft in the back of that. And, uh, using that, the lot you're speaking of for an outdoor kind of dinner theater B U. So it kind of opened up, like in that block, several different opportunities for kind of activity on a daily basis. It was, I'll be glad to share that.
Yeah.
Not in a place with you, I don't know, how valuable it is today, uh, you know, you're welcome to.
Yes, you're completely heard.
We, we, we went to Roldow, and he did what they done there with an outdoor B U. And that's where the idea came from, and so I did a vision, outdoor concerts, partners, we need that. You're all good, so you might be a combination of some of these ideas.
Yeah, we, it was kind of something we were trying to do at the time with the Ritz Theater in Talladega.
Uh huh.
And using some of the store products, maintaining the store products so that the streets kept maintained. But there was some connectivity between the buildings behind it that allowed for multiple kind of, theatrical, cultural kind of, um, opportunities, gallery space. It was, it was kind of a mixed bag. And it's something that might, uh, you know, some kind of pirate might work and all of that. I, I'm just glad to see somebody willing to invest in our downtown, appreciate it. And, uh, yeah, certainly support this idea.
Looking at this, I had got a received phone call last night from a former mayor of Birmingham, uh, bringing out a wiggy dinner. And we came to play by talking about the old wiggy business that he gave in Birmingham and what has gone to show that he's doing.
Let's move now.
I, myself, my father purchased a rebuild, uh, about a hundred thousand square feet commercial space in the central business district of downtown. And we started doing that about two thousand six, two thousand seven. And of course, Birmingham's blown up since then, and I still, we still have a whole about fifty thousand square feet in that area. Um, also, at the same time, owned a restaurant and also a, a big conference center, uh, a bit special events as well. So I've kind of had my hands on all kinds of stuff in Birmingham. I've been looking at Madison and everything the main street's doing, and it just really just interested me. I think the buildings are beautiful and the energy with everybody connected works for the synergy has been wonderful. Like, just, everybody's been so helpful and supportive. And I didn't tell Mr. Volz or Jackson, actually, Paul eleven oh one Little Street, uh, three hours ago, I closed on that, three hours ago.
Very good.
So it's only a corner, so I purchased that today. And so I started kind of dirty that, involved in that building, but so I'm slowly obtaining more and more properties. I think there's a lot of potential for the area.
Oh, we appreciate your interest in downtown, uh, too, and pulling it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. So I'm very ready for, ready for downtown next week.
Okay. Can you do anything else?
Thank you. Just thank you guys for letting me come and talk to you guys. And, uh, everybody, they have my number, they have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Good.
Uh, and I'm going to actually build out a lot of these buildings. Uh, John and I, we're from Birmingham, everybody.
You know.
So, uh, like I said, thank you guys so much, no questions, I'm going to get back on the road.
Any, any questions, Donald? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Okay, next slide, on the agenda would be evaluate some bids for couple of works and part of reforms. I don't know if you've been around, ask any, any issues there?
Something to say, John?
Yeah, say, it's just something I said, and I said, any issues there? Okay, here, none. And next one is something we talked about very briefly, a couple of previous work session, and that is the possibility of creation of an airport. I've had multiple meetings with members of the business community, uh, with other governments, uh, you know, the university. And while it's still in the, the, you know, kind of embryonic formational stages, I think this is something that it would be very, very beneficial for. So I, I, okay, you talked about this before, at a previous work session. What, you know, we would have to work through collectively as a council is, you know, who might all be, what is, is, political subdivisions get to appoint members to, you know, authority, and you have one is authorized and created, which that would be our first step in the process. We're going to work through is who might all be members and then who, what will be respected, rights and responsibilities of those members. But in my mind, and again, we've had very, uh, had a couple of meetings with Chamber, I mean, you know, this has been very traumatic thus far. You know, we know that that is a tremendous asset that we have there, but it, it needs to be a regionalized asset and not some of the more, you know, completely built. And so while this would, uh, you know, certainly we have underwriting costs, so we can ultimately make that airport all that that it can do. You know, it does foster, you know, additional regional cooperation, I think that's something that we need to seriously continue to work on. We talked about that with the parking situation, you know, with the airport, I think there are other things ultimately we, we could tackle as, as regional issues. Um, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, if we do this, this will lead to greater professional management of the airport, more expertise there out of the airport. Uh, you know, it's important that this authority created to set funds from these sources. Uh, so we, you know, we can get money from the government, we can get money from legislation, you know, that opens up for more greatly as well, I believe, because of the regionalism concept. So that, that's kind of where we are right now. And I would like to look at this on the work session again for the twentieth, and possibly the voting again for what, we would initially, if we decide to do this, we'd simply authorize the creation of airport. We would not at that point be filing for an authority, because ultimately we depend on who all we need, because of that authority. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm just trying to open this up for, for discussion. I, I, again, I, I think this is important for us to, to thank you so much to do this, because again, this is a regionalized asset, and I would turn it aside.
Okay, so I think, I think it's a great idea, um, but what we need, right, so I guess what I'm asking, I'm questioning, what we need to bring forward to keep this from turning into a similar situation that, that was created years ago, as far as, I mean, we, I know we wouldn't be able to, but we would want to at least try to be, have this in some kind of way, and not just let it run on its own. And maybe we got to be a bit help, then we may have some kind of, put us on, you know, outside of just appointing people, because sometimes people get their own challenges and might take things with little, uh, so I think we, uh, I know, I know this, I know this briefly talked about, the different, every individual organization by any governance. And that would be great, but I just don't want to get into a situation where it's just, they become new to themselves.
No, you're right, and, and to your point, I mean, that's the next one, and we need to work on that. Even, even if we create a authority, the one is filed, Anderson is still going to be on there. I mean, because, you know, because we're, we're still against the, it's actually a permanent license. Now, ultimately, it could be that, you know, assuming that we're comfortable with, you know, the entire department, and ultimately, can they do the authority? And, you know, we, we, we would need to be compensated for that, you know, we've got to figure out where, where, if ultimately we do that, you know, that's part of our skin of the game, uh, being, you're right, I guess, we've got to be very careful about that.
Because since, since I'm, I want to, councilman Ross, uh, point, we'll keep in mind, when we did this before, we really turned this over to a private hand. And something we had in control, one thing we had in control of liability, but we did not have control of the later operation. That's the, that's eventually how it's going to be that's in place, aboard of, of not of a serious, it's a private entity that's really controlling most of those. That's.
I, I think the whole premise of this, and I, I supported this idea, as I've said before. The premise is, we have a tremendous regional asset sitting, uh, out there at the airport. That is being grossly underutilized. And it's underutilized for a lot of reasons, both territorialism is part of the problem with that component. You know, we all tend to get into our little victims and, and hold important and dear what is ours, and we don't, it's like a child, sandbox, you don't want to share the toy, you know? Uh, we all stand the game from any development that happens with the promotion of the airport. We have a fourth, we're on, on this runway and stuff. Uh, we have an opportunity to partner with, with regional partners, through the business community, through the chamber, through universities, through the local municipalities. That cannot, it's a, it's an easy ask, in my opinion, because they all can see value in that, in their, within their own freedom. But also as the whole, you know, it's that horizon ties where y'all shifts, it, concept, it, it, it really does apply in this, in this instance. And I think we're, I'm glad to see it pushing forward and continuing to push forward. I have some preconceived ideas on, on how I'd like to see that authority operate, but I'm going to sit back and listen and, uh, take in what all you guys see as important pieces, and let's, let's craft something that we all are happy with. And, uh, all can agree that this is a right and good path for us to be taking and, uh, and move it forward. Uh, when I say all of us, I'm talking about all five of us being in one voice, but I'm also talking about the partners, the regional partners, uh, as, as another voice in all of this that are, that is also in concert. So, you know, it, it's real important that we do this, uh, methodically and, uh, in a, in a method, in a way that everybody remains comfortable through the whole process. There are issues that we do take the time to properly sit here, vet them, or vet them with our neighbors and other potential partners and make sure that it all works in that capacity, so.
Yeah, I just don't want to do the, do the handoff. You know, and, but, yeah, I want to.
Any additional discussion portion? Okay, uh, let's move on to item three, suppose, twenty requests, we can't complete it.
Yes, sir, we receive a call from this massive race, uh, about, we talk about Cap Lee. And I don't know if already, if you, for married and being of service, that don't kid, if you actually went out to Cap Lee and does that, Cap Lee does a lot of thing to help my youth, that's how we, my youth. But right now with the, with the, uh, COVID, they really have a problem to push through the new programs that are coming in the summer. Uh, they actually support a program as well to help for the father leadership program, so so many things they do for us. I was likely request that we be able to help them in, uh, they can, they can, uh, help with some of the summer programs for around fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, they actually, actually score a little less, but I think we can, I checked what I found yesterday, I think we can find fifteen hundred dollars half a month. Because they actually do support our programs, our, our programs, I think it's something that we can, we need to help them with for.
I have two complaints to work with.
Yeah, I have any issue there.
Anything else?
Okay, so I got that on the next, okay.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, suppose, I'll turn it over to you for the last item, which is the discussion of our city hall.
What I want to ask councilmen, I don't, because I don't, I don't, I don't like to be a reactive person, I like to be a proactive person. We don't want to have to move back downtown, and I think it needs to be sooner than later. What I want to ask the council is, if I can, if I can have staff and start looking at moving, uh, look at the location of the city, the center property, that we come back downtown and actually build the city hall on there. I guess that'd be on the south end of this, and I, I want to reach out to some architects and actually talk about this building. Because I just don't think, even when we get the federal courthouse, we're talking about, that's two million, two million dollar road before we even get that, that property even in our hands. Uh, and I don't think that's the conducive, what we need to do in city hall, we talk about, we talk about, have accessibility, we talk about things that has, has to do with historically, that, that, uh, what we can work with, even if we take that building, talking to the library, the library is another opportunity, we were looking at it when we own that building. But the library needs to expand as well, they don't, they're not looking to leave that building. We can actually make, we're talking about, phone to kick around, maybe move now, now we're going to the, uh, federal courthouse, if we decide to take the federal courthouse. But I do like, would like to move forward to actually start, probably to start getting ready, and start moving and having a nice part of timeline for us moving downtown. I would like to use property, it's, it's city, we can say for a moment, we have enough room to build something in it, and I would like to start engaging people, bring something in for the council. Some ideas and concepts from the city council, that's, that's what I'm asking.
This property?
Just a portion of this, but on the side, with, with the city, it's not, we're not going to stop the city, it definitely is a size building.
Well, I've never, I, I only been in that building one time, I went to a library officer's office, and that's all. And I, I, I don't really, I wouldn't want to see us totally discounting that, to me, that's a treasure, it's a beautiful building. And we may be in the States of Aniston, I mean, you look in the past, the beautiful, uh, library is torn down, that they gathered in the past, probably a lot more than that. And I would really, really at least like to explore and see what we can, and see what could be done at, at the federal. And, and we need people, we, we want to expand downtown, we need to get some traffic downtown. We need to do everything we can to create a destination for downtown. And I, I don't want to do, I, I wouldn't want to do something that would be detrimental, but I'd at least like to learn more about that location. And I think it's one of those beautiful buildings I've seen, this entire county is beautiful. I don't know how practical it is, but I just would like to know, have more information.
Um, yeah, what about the old Dixie Building, off of two, two, it has huge parking lot area, try and go to.
But again, you're saying, if we want to buy a building, another building, instead of building, we're going to go back to the old building. Keep in mind, this was old Dixie.
Right.
Things that we went through with this, and the, the problem we had with this, I would just like as a city, if we're going to do it, and again, not to call these federal courts, but still we come out building. And I still we come out building, but I just think if we want to do a new city hall or do something a little different. I do think we need to deal with city hall, if we're going to build this, if we're going to get other surrounding cities. When they came out of the city hall, they actually built a new city hall, so that's, that's, that's.
So I'm building it from ground up, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, on my side, I'm putting it in the school, so that's talking about putting it on the other side of the school, this still be the city inside. I guess, I mean. What's our best, the best, the new city hall? The one that's there?
We had it.
We had said, no. So, what, probably just, you talking about the park lot, that's connected to it? No, we're just talking about, if you're looking at, we got property that, it's a little park lot that we can actually build out, go up two stories, it could be the side too. Connected to the? Yes, only by reason. So how much, how much of that lot will we take up? No, we can take up all the other, yeah, but we have that park space, I wouldn't want to do it here, because that'll take up too much park space, I'm just talking about the view. Yeah, I see.
Now, I don't know expert, but can you mind being able to, trying to wonder, would it cost us more to build from the ground up than to revitalize a building, an older building?
I, 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 you know, I'm going to tell you, that's a loaded question, uh, because it kind of depends. Um, and I hear what you're saying, uh. I, I'm going to tell you that I think that there are, in my mind, I think we all agree that city hall needs to be downtown. Uh, the closer to the heart of downtown, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, what I see in the federal building is an opportunity to create a civic plaza. Uh, it was part of a master plan that was done several years ago, when they were planning the, uh, we get a, a group, uh, it was a community-wide master planning exercise that was done. We get the, the jail facility, the, uh, police and jail facility, and it involved all that. Uh, and it made some assumptions that, you know, they weren't exactly accurate, but it made some assumptions. And created a civic plaza there. My idea and all of that would be that you take advantage of the federal courthouse being built, you take advantage of the proximity of the county courthouse being built. You take advantage of the new hotel being built, and you take that, that parking area in between those two, and you create some kind of civic arena. You know, a, a plaza area where people can gather, uh, where you can, you know, when we have these bike races and things like that, that becomes the central kind of gathering point. It also creates, uh, Tuscaloosa did very well, Tuscaloosa had an advantage of, or tornado, or disadvantage, I guess, it's not really an advantage. Tornado tore through town, it, there was a lot of money that could be spent. And I understand other communities built something new, but they built something they didn't have. They didn't have a federal courthouse that is beautiful as that building is, as an asset to be able to consider that they own. And we own that building in this two years down the road. Uh, but I think there are other sites, I, I, I agree with you, Dixie site is a valid site to consider. I believe this site is also a valid site to consider. But if I consider this site, I would consider doing something with this facility as well. Uh, now, I think that this facility needs a significant facet anyway. I think it was short-changed when it was done, uh, the vision to, to do this building was never realized because the dollars weren't available. Uh, but I would, I would encourage us, as we're looking at this, to think twenty years down the road, think forty years down the road, think fifty years down the road, as to what our legacy can be for this community, what can we do to make downtown stronger? And Dixie is a viable one, the library site, that block is a viable, uh, one. If you look at like, uh, home image or kind of Soho Square, like it is in Homewood, that's a viable consideration. Uh, the federal courthouse is a viable consideration, I understand the pitfalls, I understand, but there are parking all over the city that is underutilized, lots that we own, one right behind that building. Accessibility has been addressed in that building, now, it's not ideal, but it's a historic structure. There is a method in them to get in and out of that facility from a accessible standpoint. I understand there's some historic preservation issues that have to be worked through, but I don't believe that those are insurmountable. Uh, I am, I guess I'm about preservationist at heart, and I don't see the city taking that building and leaving it for the Alabama road, and whatever else happens there, or turning it into something else is a good, being a good steward of that. Uh, I, I don't think it, I think that it has the potential, it definitely fall disrepair, and I think we have an obligation, uh, with that building to maintain its beauty, its integrity, and the location couldn't be better for a city hall kind of component. Uh, I'm not saying that that's the answer, I, I'm not suggesting that, but I think that step one, we ought to look at maybe those four sites. In an in-depth kind of, and if it costs us a few more dollars to do that, remember, we're planning for the next fifty years. We're not planning for next year's budget, we're, we've got to be thinking of it in a holistic, in a, a long-term, real world. This is a huge, huge decision for the city of Aniston. What we do can make a huge success recommendation for the city of Aniston, or a huge failure recommendation. The burden on this group of five right here is almost overwhelming when you consider it from that perspective. We have got to be careful, and if it's two years before we get it done, well, that's part of the reason that we need to start right now. I absolutely believe we need to start right now, but we need to be willing to spend the necessary dollars to do the proper evaluations of these. And I don't know if you have it, an individual architect that you ended up finding that can do these four evaluations for you, or if you hire four different ones and let each one of them have a site and out of a lottery or something, and let them come forth with their best scheme. Uh, you know, I, I don't know how we do this, but I think, you know, also, it's got to be, it can't be these five, right here, to make the decision either. It's got to be a community engagement. I think that we need to, to develop these, these four options, and there may be more than that, or you guys may have other ones that you say, hey, we, you're not thinking about this. But I'm looking at, you know, uh, from an architectural perspective, and I, I see it maybe differently than you guys, doesn't make it right or wrong. I'm not suggesting that, that there's a necessarily, a different level of knowledge and all of that, we all know what is good. Uh, so, but I think that putting together some kind of package like that, even if it costs us a few dollars, let's put those packages together, let's have a series of community forums. Where we go around, word by word, we make sure that our community has involvement in this and support behind it. And then with, that process will tell us the right facility to go into. But I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm glad you bring this discussion forward, I think that this is a valid consideration. I, my concern with this one on the front end is that it's not in the heart of downtown, it's on the edge of downtown. And I've seen other communities do that and lose their downtowns in the process. We have a large downtown now, Oxford pulled theirs out of downtown, and their downtown's fine, but their downtown is two blocks. I mean, it's, there's not a downtown there, I mean, it's, it's not hard, you build three buildings, and that all of a sudden, it looks like it's exploded. Uh, and they did, when they, they also backfilled that building really well with that theater. Uh, they backfilled their former city hall really well with that theater, so, you know, it made sense for Oxford. Uh, Jacksonville didn't really do that, you know, they built that complex out there behind Hall Mart, but they didn't really boot Seattle. Seattle's still sitting in that old building on the side there, and they were, I believe, wise enough to understand that they didn't, they weren't helping their downtown by pulling that out. Uh, we always knew that move to the star building was temporary. I don't think anybody ever considered that to be a permanent solution, I know I certainly did not, uh. But I do think that a process like this, where we bring in these four or five sites, there may be more, I know when we looked at, at Seattle, we looked at, what, eighteen sites before we settled on the star. If, there may be more that are worth looking at, you know, maybe we do look at, uh, the old Commerce Tower building again, and, you know, I mean, maybe that's a viable consideration again. I, there are a lot of options, um, but I do believe that we need to be, and maybe that Aniston Auto Parts site that is said to be, you know, is demo, maybe that's. Um, but I do believe that we need to be, and maybe that Aniston Auto Parts site that is set to be, you know, is demo, maybe that's a location too. Uh, I mean, that's right, the federal courthouse too, right there on the, the Nigga Trail. That's not a bad consideration either. I, I'm just saying, I think if, if we just say, look, I want to do a study on the corner right here, that's about the study. But I want to see us do some studies in other locations too. I want to be sure that we are making a decision that will bode well for our community for a hundred years from now.
So, to your point, uh, the property, now, that's not very clear, I was looking at, if you started at that park, then you go to the South. Um, then park, that's a some of the, 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 uh, you've got to help me at the courthouse, and across the street, you're doing renovation, but I, but. But if you move just to the west of there, where the property is right adjacent to, uh, you know, C I O, C I O borough, yeah, you're right. Though, I can't remember, I'm, I'm forty-eight years old, I can't remember if I ever been in that building. They may have been, I never know. But we have a wonderful quarter that's being built, and then you have these buildings. Now, some of it has received on it, but that, to me, if we could just go right there, where we didn't, I, I put that, that's, I think that would be an ideal spot because of the proximity to where it is, and it would be keeping everything all tight and dusted. Also, I, I was a big fan of the, of the Windex building, uh, but I was also a bigger fan of the building that used to be kissing, that was a paper building, you know. I think we have, at that spot, we, we, you know, we have a, 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 a parking that is not utilized. I mean, we, we have a lot of parking that's not utilized in Aniston, but I think the more we can, if we start to build out from North Street, like, when the general is trying to do with, with that little area, that would be, if we build it somewhere close to that, it looks like we've done a whole lot. We've only done two things, but it makes the entire area really better. Uh, and then, we were talking about this building, if we're going to contain and use this building, the river, so it's running out. I think our acoustic here, the sound system itself, I don't know, or I think we could.
There are a lot of things we can do. I think, up inside and out, uh, there's need to be, I, I think that this building needs to be brought in to today's standards for a meeting facility, and I would encourage us all to spend a little time looking at civic meeting centers to see where we stack up. Uh, we do some things very well, and we've managed this building very well. Uh, it's been a good product for the city. It's been a good revenue stream for the city, uh, and it's, it's run well, it's managed well. Uh, it's a, it's a true asset, uh, but we should enhance it as a part of this process. I mean, I'd like to see us be tackling this building, city hall, and some form, and some form of fashion, and the Nigga Trail off the same time. I mean, let.
See, I would add, where, where I'm looking at, on that, on that building, where it's, the little buildings, the little buildings, that area. Um, I mean, I'm looking, we're looking, we're looking at the C I O, we're really, we're just going to check out, but all of that is right on the Nigga Trail, and, you know, I don't.
I think you get the Nigga Trail built, I, I think that stuff takes care of itself, quite frankly. I think that there is, uh, there are entities that jump right at that kind of stuff when there's.
They might start to put interest.
The activity that starts happening along the Nigga Trail, that, those buildings, a lot of them are going to just mushroom into something because they're too convenient not to.
And it didn't, I, that didn't kill them all, you know, we, we, so those buildings just.
No, pick them up, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did run a bridge up in there until, and I, it's got there all the time, so it, it had been that long.
Exactly. I'm not sure if someone's thinking, I think I'm on for you, I heard you.
That's, and, and again, I just thought we could sit out there just to have a conversation, because there's no, there's a problem. What I want to do is, is sit in there, is bring before policy makers to give me some guidance on which way to go. Because I think that's a great idea, if we get rid of our conference plan, let's do what we need to do, just like a meeting center, we, this, the meeting center is where it is now. We didn't invest in it, uh, looking at the structure, how we want to go. So that's what I'm asking for, just give me some guidance, if we want to look at other buildings, let me know when I do not, because again, it was, no, that's about two years before we actually get that federal courts, but at least when we did, let's have a plan on what, and that's what I'm asking about. Yes, this building needs to be, be adjusted, because it's not doing as well as it could if we were bringing it up to, uh, to, to progress. I think all this conversation needs to be had. I think there are things that arise, and that we're going to have an opportunity to do some great things. So let's thank for moving, and that's what I want, I need council guys, because I don't want to just sit in this, I want to have a plan and move forward, and I start a time.
Well, and I'm certainly going to look at other locations, that, we don't need to look at eighteen locations. I mean, we need to limit that number down to, you know, to a reasonable number, that we can learn, develop appropriate information, so that we can make, as you suggest. And this is a waiting decision, you're not questioning that.
Can, can, can the yard something, in my opinion, the property should be given the property we already own? Because my goodness, do we need to really keep buying more property? Because I remember the Windex building, it was so expensive. That's why we didn't, we didn't go there in the first place. It was just unbelievably expensive. And so that's, that's what I want to do, is just put a priority on what we already have.
I think that's fine.
So if you want to pass on to me some possible options, if you want me to look into, and I have to go a little bit too, so we can start having this conversation. And then we talk to someone, the, the federal courthouse, that actually optimize that, these times, or that, or what, and have some ideas, that what we can do with that, and start working before, and start having this conversation. So when we get, when this town to transition, we are prepared.
Is that all right? Anything else? All right, you got any other questions?
I'm sure that's fine.
All right, I'll send a gentleman to the platform.